Okay, we'll reconvene this meeting of April 28th. Rick, you want to lead us in the pledge, please?
Certainly.
Okay, well, welcome, everybody. We appreciate everybody coming out here to our meeting tonight. First thing on the agenda, we have a proclamation, special recognition. Mr. Tyler, are you here?
Thank you. I have a special proclamation for you this evening. Whereas the city of Dublin's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and sustainability in the built environment that affect our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster gives us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council and International Code Council Foundation to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, to assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. And whereas these guidelines, dedicated members of the International Code Council develop and implement the highest quality codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, play. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Michael Keenan, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2014 as Building Safety Month in the city of Dublin, acknowledging the dedication and service of local code officials in our community and thanking them for their vigilance in assuring the safety and well-being of our citizens. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for acknowledging Building Safety Month. At this time, I would also like to thank the staffs of Building Standard and also Washington Township Fire Prevention. Without those staff members, we really would not have the ability to do the things that we do to help promote building safety throughout the Dublin community. They do a lot of great work, and sometimes it's great work with not a whole lot of thanks, if you will. I mean, who wants to get a building from here, right? So it's not the type of thing that most people really cherish in coming to see my staff, but they do a great job of it. To that end, I would like to read an announcement, if I could, that hopefully will be a breath of fresh air here. It says, "Dear Mr. Tyler, the Ohio Board of Building Standards is pleased to inform you that the board has chosen the city of Dublin as the 2014 recipient of the Dave Smith Building Department Award for Innovation. The board has established this award to recognize a certified building department that has demonstrated exemplary customer service, dedication to public service, and has furthered the mission and goals of the board." So this is a great honor, if you will. And again, it speaks to the dedication of both Building Standards and Washington Township Fire Prevention, and the cooperation between the two groups. I think the innovation, and I will not take up my two minutes, but I think the innovation can be spelled out in a couple of initiatives that we do on an annual basis. One is, we will be having our third annual Dublin Construction Forum at the Talus, at the Rex Center. Let's see, it's going to be Thursday, May 1st, at 8:00. And that's 8:00 a.m. in the morning. And we would like to invite anybody to come. It's both open to residents and the building community, so architects, engineers, developers, those individuals. And what we do is, we give classes on building safety issues, as well as issues dealing with bridge street and some of the hot topics, if you will, in the building community here in Dublin. The other thing I'd like to also recognize, and I believe this is another part of what the award speaks to, is the city of Dublin is one of, I can say only a handful of communities that actually receive plans electronically. So we have our own electronic plan review system, and we'll be highlighting that in the forum as well. And when I say a handful of communities, really, the system that we use, we're the only one in the state of Ohio that actually uses that system. So we allow our, both our residential and our commercial customers to submit plans electronically, which makes it more efficient, more effective, and it's a cost savings to them in the long run.
And green.
And it's green, and it's green. So we want to continue to do good things in the building department. This award, I think, is indicative of that. But again, it recognizes the hard work of both staffs that are involved in it. So thank you very much for the proclamation.
All right. Terrific. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a special presentation this evening from the Dublin Convention and Visitor Bureau. Mr. Dring?
Good evening. I wonder if I could also introduce Phil Smith, who's on our board. Mr. Smith, he's also one of your city council reps on our board. He's been a tremendous addition, so we appreciate you guys forwarding him on to us and having him on board as well. Next week is National Tourism Week across the nation, where our industry celebrates travel and tourism, and recognizes the impact our industry has on the country. Nationally, the travel industry generates $2.1 trillion in expenditures every year. In the state of Ohio, it's the third-largest employer in the state of Ohio, more than 450,000 jobs. Right here in Franklin County, our industry generates $7.8 billion in revenue for Franklin County. And right here in Dublin, last year, 1.6 million visitors came to the city of Dublin last year. So as you can see, it's a huge economic generator for not only Dublin, the state of Ohio, but nationwide as well. In your packet, it's a few examples of some of the social media stuff we'll be pushing out, kind of relating the importance of travel and tourism here in Dublin. Our board and staff is excited about the city's initiative for the new community wayfinding that you've embarked on here in the last few months. You know, you've heard me talk over the years how important wayfinding is to our visitors and our travelers coming to the city of Dublin. Every year, in our research, the number-one concern our visitors tell us is wayfinding and signage for them to get around. You know, they basically have trouble navigating around our city. And of course, we want visitors to stay in our restaurants, go to our attractions, spend money at our gas stations rather than leaving town because they can't find stuff. So whatever we can do to support you, I know we've reached out to staff already to support this initiative, we again, thank you for taking that on, and we're happy to help in any way we possibly can as well. One of our ongoing strategies has been, over the years, is to attract visitors that are staying at events that are held outside of the city of Dublin. A good example is Ohio High School Athletic Association's state basketball tournaments, which were held at the Shawstein Center last month. Our goal is always to work with that organization and make sure we get people to stay in Dublin while they're attending that event. Last year, we actually hosted 15 of the 32 state high school basketball teams that were held in the state of Ohio as well for that tournament. So we're excited about that. Obviously, you can imagine, in addition to teams, fans, administrators come, they typically spend money in restaurants close to the hotels, so it's real positive for us as well. We're working hard to make sure that happens with the upcoming football championships, which are coming to, back to Columbus for the first time in several years this fall at Ohio Stadium. Kind of along those same lines, we're excited to announce that every visiting college football team playing Ohio State this fall, except one, will be staying at Dublin Hotels, which is a huge queue. Obviously, not only football teams, but administrators, fans, bands in some instances are all going to be staying at Dublin. So that is going to bring a lot of economic impact and exposure to the city as well. Kind of along with soccer, you guys may have noticed this weekend, a lot of visiting license plates, a lot of soccer kids running around town. We hosted the Nike Cup, over 300 soccer teams, boys' soccer teams from 11 states and Canada were in town this weekend. Huge event at Sports Ohio in Dari, and even spilled over to Spindler Field in Westerville as well. Majority of those folks stayed in Dublin Hotels. Two weeks ago, the girls' teams tournament held the same thing, just under 300 teams as well. So that's always one of our bigger tournaments here in town. Football University, again, we're excited to bring that back to town in July, 17th through 19th, the German High School. If you remember, the last year was the first year we held that. A huge success last year, we had 15 of the top prep football players from across the world come to Dublin from 45 states and seven countries. They'll be doing the same thing here this July. Last year generated 4,500 room nights here in Dublin, tremendous, and millions of dollars in economic impact. Just hotel revenue alone, what that means, it's about $500,000 in hotel revenue generated just from that one weekly event here in Dublin. So it was a huge event. In addition to Top Gun, we're also excited to host the 2014 United States Australian Rules Football National Championship. This was an event we worked with council on several years ago, I think it was back in 2011, that we pitched them and got them to have their event here. It's going to be held October 10th through 12th at Dari Fields. It will attract 40 teams from 40 separate cities across the United States. Canada will bring teams, there are several teams that are coming from Australia as well. So we're excited to have that in our community. Also, it's totally free for local residents to come out and see. We actually have a brief, I think, 97, 92nd video to kind of get you guys excited to exactly see what's in store for you here in October, real quick.
Where's all the helmets and protection there, Scott?
That's right, no helmets.
Scott, where are these games going to be played?
At Dari. So it's going to be quite a spectacle. One football field or two NFL football fields layered next to each other, and we're going to have six fields, so it's going to take up most of Dari, and it's going to be quite a spectacle with the things. And obviously, the mission is free for all residents. So we were in Austin last year, it was in Austin, Texas, and there were thousands of people there, and it's quite an event. So I'm more excited. October 10th through 12th. So we're excited to have that in town. It's, you know, obviously, we've secured not all sports-related conferences since the last spoke a couple months ago. The SafeCon event, which is the collegiate flying competition, which council supports over the years, is going to be at Don Scott in 2015. The International Rhino Foundation, we are able to secure that event next year. And we recently hosted six bus tours with 300 people alone from across the region that stayed at our hotels and did a lot of shopping, particularly in historic Dublin. Finally, I'm excited to represent the city of Dublin on the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority Board. I'm actually one of the two suburban mayor seats on the board. This is the organization that oversees the convention center, the Nationwide Arena, and the new Hilton downtown. And we're excited to be part of that group and kind of make sure Dublin has a voice heard within that group, including your packet, agenda, and some of the meeting minutes as well. So again, we thank you for all your support. If it wasn't for your support, events like this, President's Cup, and Top Gun, the events that bring millions and millions of dollars to our economy and the tremendous international exposure that comes with it, it couldn't have been enough if it wasn't for your help. So we appreciate all your support.
We thank you too, Scott. We really appreciate your help, the wayfinding initiative, and your partnership with us in making that come to fruition. Congratulations on the Franklin County Board approval. Terrific. And look forward to hearing from you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have some representatives from the library here, I believe. Is it Mr. Lozinski? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come back. I'm with Allison Circle, who's the Chief Customer Experience Officer for the library, and Allison is responsible for programming activity, particularly around our new facilities. So she's going to provide that overview tonight. I'm here just to come back after our first meeting, I think, two weeks ago, just to give you an update on where we are. We continue to work with your staff on a regular basis. We've had at least two meetings since our last meeting with you, or our last presentation with you, and I would characterize our deliberations and conversations as very productive up until this point.
Yeah, for the benefit of our audience here, council's been working on, it's been a very high-end goal of ours with respect to the new library facility, and we're getting closer and closer. And this is an update for council this evening about some of the uses, so carry on.
Great, thank you. So I can tell you that our selected architect, NBBJ, is meeting with MKSK, one of your planning firms, reviewing our site options. We're really spending a great deal of time right now trying to dig deep into exploring collaborations and what the possibilities could be with the library and other entities within the Dublin region, and also spending some time reviewing that scope of work that is really beyond what is, we would characterize as the library design work right now, and working with the city manager and staff on making sure we have an understanding of those two items. We really want to give you a high overview of some of our program elements tonight. And I know pictures perhaps never do it justice, but we are working with the OCLC staff, and one of the libraries that they have shared with us is the one on the left in Almere, the Netherlands, which is a combination of public and private use. I think they actually have residential as part of that library, and, you know, we have thought of that for some of our other buildings over time. The one on the right is Howard County, Maryland, which they actually combined the local historical society, which is an important mixed use for the library. Since we were last here, we'll tell you that we have some very good news, maybe along the lines of the previous presentation. Columbus has been awarded Host City for the International Federation of Libraries Association. We worked with OCLC and Ohio State on this over the last couple of years, and we will be bringing 4,000 librarians from over 100 countries to central Ohio in 2016. And we think it's a great opportunity, and certainly putting Columbus and Dublin in the cities that you see represented there, we think is very important for all of us. Allison is going to be talking about some of the trends that we see in libraries, particularly as it relates to collaborations. How do we identify the collaborations upfront in terms of capital investment, and how do we understand the collaborations moving forward with ongoing operational costs? And she will touch on some of that in her remarks.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council, and everyone. I also want to introduce Mary Helen Hatcher, who is here with Columbus Metropolitan Library as well. She's always making sure I tell you the right thing, so listen to her. One of the things I wanted to walk through here are some of the thoughts we have, as you will recall, we are in a building program doing 10 buildings in the very near future, and it's important to us that we look out ahead, and what kinds of things are we trying to integrate into these buildings? Because we're not building the 2000 library, we're trying to build a 2020 library. And we're trying to bring in all this thinking and build something that's different, and I wanted to take this moment to describe some of those things for you. One of the things that we're really focusing on is this community space that allows us to facilitate the convening of a community. We have gathering space, lots of meeting rooms. In a moment here, I'm going to show you the floor plan of our upcoming Whitehall branch, to give you an idea, but lots of meeting rooms that organizations and the community can book for free to gather together and make Dublin a great spot. So also, the flexibility, we know the moment the door opens, somebody's going to say, "Why did we put that desk right there?" So we want to make sure that we build it so that we can reconfigure the space as other trends come, and as we introduce new services as well. Technology is on everybody's mind, and by the time we build this building, the things we bought will have changed, because the pace of technology is about every three months. We're really looking at convenience. As you know, we have a self-check today, but trying to do as many things that allow people to access through their own means as we can. Efficiency, digitization, we have a project we're working on where we are digitizing local history. We want to make that very visible and present. What you'll see on the right here is a drive-up window, that is actually Mary Helen's hand. Just to also make sure you understand that it's important to us for convenience that there's a drive-up pickup window, so that you can order your reserves and pick it up. And this picture on the left is my placeholder for the fact that the idea of the big desk, that you had to go up, you have to go up to the desk, that is something we're not moving forward with. We instead are working towards a concierge type of service, where we use technology and tablets in order to escort the customers and their needs, things they're trying to find, and we can take that tool with us instead of being locked at a big desk. Civic space. Well, what would Dublin Library be without a great civic space? So one of the things we want to make sure that we're able to provide are a place that can be utilized around the facility. These are some examples. This is a new library up in Cuyahoga, and I put this in because of the green roof here, so that you're able to go outside and have a delightful experience that's unexpected. This is a building, Pat and I went to this, it's Hunt Library in North Carolina, and it's just showing a veranda on a top floor, so that there's outdoor space bringing into the building. This is the top floor of Chicago Public Library. It's a space for weddings and events and those kinds of things during the day when events aren't happening there. It's a really beautiful place to go and be contemplative. And this one on the bottom here is our main library, and as you are probably aware, we're also renovating that building. But what I'm demonstrating here is, at the back of the building, facing the east, we're taking the marble exterior off and building, there we are, putting a glass facade so that we can embrace the park, the Topiary Park that is to the direct east of us. So those are the kinds of things we're integrating as we're building these buildings. So specifically for Dublin, pay no attention that this is Starbucks over here, it's trying to represent that there's a coffee bar in this building. We have five to six meeting rooms. One has, can seat 200 people, and it can also be divided into two or three smaller rooms. If you don't need 200, you can have a 50-person room, a 25-person room. In addition, we're programming for two 25-person meeting rooms. These meeting rooms will be equipped with technology, so that people can do presentations or so on. We have 14 individual study rooms, not quite individual, but four is a four-person collaboration space, and 10 two-person meeting rooms for a tutor and an individual, a coffee bar, homework help. We have a very busy homework help, it's a service we're continuing to provide, we're doubling it in size to 40 people. Life Skills is a partnership we're doing with Columbus State, and these spaces are smaller because it's not large classrooms, but it's more about some remediation, some tutorials, some proxy testing, expanded kids and teen spaces, and a large quiet study with a fireplace, dreamy right there. And so, just as a point of comparison, this is my last slide here. This building is our new Whitehall branch, which will open in early 2015. It is the equivalent of today's Dublin branch. Our new Dublin branch will be twice the size. So this is, let's say, 20,000 square feet, our new one will be 42,000 square feet, as we have planned it today. And to locate you, just to help you conceptualize what this looks like on a floor plan, this is all our staff area. You can see here the pickup window. These are individuals, smaller-scale meeting rooms. This particular one is our Life Skills. These are restrooms in here. These are individual study rooms. Oh, I'm sorry, that's, Mary Helen, you didn't correct me. These are the restrooms over here, and these are the other meeting rooms that can expand and contract because this wall here can open or close. And homework help, mother's room, and some preparatory space for the kid's space. This is all a kid's space, a little quiet reading here, our collection, computers, more of our collection teens. And lastly, over here, is the quiet reading room with a little fireplace that looks out onto the trees on the outside. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. This little gizmo right here is a recording studio for teens, so that they can do video production, they can do audio production, and explore that as a tool for them.
Very good.
So.
Council, any questions or comments? We appreciate your input.
Good, thank you very much.
We're all very, very excited about getting this moving forward. As I said, we've been working on it three years. We've grown from one high school to three high schools over the years, and we know the need's critical, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Okay, this is the citizen comment portion, and I see Mr. Mauer has signed up.
Members of the Dublin Governance, sorry, I came in late a moment ago, I fell asleep. And I'm now collecting my thoughts. I think I need to do one thing. I made a, error is not quite the word, when I was up here last time at the podium, I applauded the city forestry department for the marvelous placing of flowers, particularly, I noticed that night, the ones at the traffic circle up near my place. And I thought there was a strange silence after I said that, and I realized, I don't think they did those flowers that were up there three weeks ago, just recently. I think those were perennials, and they came up from last year. But it doesn't detract from what I meant to say about, I did say about them, they are marvelous plotters, plotters and planters. Now, I note there are a lot more flowers this time. I guess those are also some perennials, maybe. But there are, the same kind of planning went in to put them there that I mentioned last time. So the more of that, the finer and the nicer. Which reminds me of something yesterday. Have you ever heard of a person named Emmett Conway? Emmett Conway? Well, this is in connection with what you've been speaking. He was a great forester from the state of Ohio, who was yesterday, have you ever been to Lake Hope? One of the groups I belong to, which is a group which desires to preserve matters of great historical interest, and we had an annual meeting yesterday. And the centerpiece was an induction into the Hall of Fame of the, and I don't know the exact title of the state organization, but any rate, the organization which deals with forestry. He had, for example, catalogued, catalogued the forests in the state, and has bequeathed, the family has bequeathed tons of material to the university from his work here. At any rate, he was honored yesterday posthumously, and I was, I didn't, I wasn't aware of the range and depth of his work, but it was marvelous to hear about it. So you might keep that in mind sometime. So you might keep that in mind sometime, you might want to honor the arboretum forestry part of this city for the work which they've done over the years. And you know, I think that's, if I can recall after my snooze, what I was going to talk about here this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maurer. This brings us to the consent agenda portion and of our meeting. Anybody want to take anything off of the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Ann?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes. And on to second reading, ordinance 21-14.
Res zoning approximately 4.6 acres located on the east side of Coffin Road north of Forest Run Drive with a current stub of nature drive from R. Royal District to R. 2, limited suburban residential district, approving a preliminary plat to create four residential lots requiring a preliminary plat variance to the required right-of-way and pavement widths.
And I understand the applicant's request to postpone it to May 5th, so look for a motion to postpone.
Second.
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes. On to the first reading ordinances, ordinance 22-14.
Amendment in Chapter 153 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Dublin to permit adult family homes in all districts where single-family dwellings are permitted, and to permit adult care facilities in all districts where multiple-family dwellings are permitted, as required by the Ohio Revised Code, provided certain distance requirements are met, and Section 153.234 amendments to modify the notification requirements for public hearing.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Ms. Reeder's going to present.
Jennifer.
Good evening, council members. The amendment before you tonight does several things. Stated, the Ohio Revised Code provides that adult family homes and adult care facilities are to be treated as permitted uses in single-family districts. We simply take the Ohio Revised Code definitions and put them in the Dublin Code, and we also are permitted under the Revised Code to add a dispersal requirement. We can prevent the excessive concentration of these types of facilities. We're suggesting 500 feet between residences. Another facet of this amendment is to require adequate employee parking for these facilities. The unrelated amendment expands our notification capabilities for rezoning so we can have in any medium designated by council instead of just newspaper.
Very good.
Thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think it's important that council demonstrate its firm commitment to its resolution to this matter, and because I don't believe that this ordinance represents an appropriate resolution, I would move that we withdraw this ordinance in order that council may engage more thoughtful consideration of its final resolution.
I'll second that motion. Ann?
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Okay, then. So, help me out here.
Well, I believe the intent, Mr. Lecliter, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that over the last number of months and last week and even today, I believe, console and staff has received a number of emails and presentations, and of course, received the minutes from the planning and zoning hearing that was held last week, and I believe console is about to or with that withdraw directing staff to take another look at especially the dispersal issue, and I believe that perhaps also work with our state legislators and bring back to them a revised ordinance at a date to be determined. I would only remind console that next week, it's kind of unusual, we only have a week before our next meeting, so we'd like a little time to work on these things, and if there's more direction, and if I've missed anything, Mr. Lecliter, please correct me.
No, I think that's an accurate reflection of my intention. Go ahead.
I'm in agreement with this, except that I would like it to be brought back to us in June, as we only have one meeting in July, and so that we can continue moving, so I guess I would ask council to direct the staff, as Mr. Smith has indicated, to bring us back information that would talk about the dispersal aspect of this particular ordinance.
So withdrawing this then really precludes the public testimony?
Yeah, there would, yeah, there would be nothing tonight, we'd be directed to appear at the first meeting in June, is that, first meeting in June, which gives us about five weeks to get something.
Is that as much time as you need, or could you come back at the second meeting in May?
Well, being the, I'm sorry, the memorial tournament's going to take a week of staff's time, so perhaps the second reading in June would be more appropriate. Thank you, Amy, appreciate that.
No, what I said was May, sooner rather than later.
Oh, I, well, I don't, I think the problem being here that we want to spend a little time with, or staff will want to spend a little time with our representatives at the State House, and those meetings take a little while to set up, so.
The only thing about that, I think, I see these as two very separate issues. I would like for the research to be done and for some ordinance to be brought back to us in June. Meeting with the state legislators, we know that they're not going to address these issues till their lame duck session in the fall, really. So we have quite a bit of time to talk to them.
Okay.
To ask about additional language that they might choose to add to bill.
I think we've all been a little conflicted on this, and one of the reasons I was reticent about whether to pull this or leave it on, we have a lot of people here that signed up to speak, okay? We can't have that process continue as it's pulled because there can be no public testimony because of the ordinance.
You're correct, it's been removed from the agenda, Mr. Keenan.
So I know that council's view is that this issue requires additional review, and that we do want to work with our State House representatives as a second-tier, two-pronged approach here. So we are hearing you, we are listening, we're not trying to not have you talk, but I think this is probably going to be a better approach, and that's what we're going to do. So do we need a separate motion to withdraw, or we're good?
We already have a.
Had the motion and the withdrawal, and the only thing I'd add is, let's set it,
let's pick the exact date, Marcia, for in June, or.
I think the direction was the first meeting.
First meeting in June, okay, thank you.
So I think, yes.
If I may, if I could just follow up on your comments, the rationale underlying my motion here this evening, and I certainly don't want to appear to be presumptuous with respect to what your feelings are, but I, but I think that council does understand, you know, that there is some uncomfortableness, you know, with what has been proposed. So that having been said, we all have had the opportunity to thoroughly examine the proceedings before the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, certainly we've received a number of emails. I would think that it would be appropriate for Ms. Mitchell's PowerPoint presentation, you know, could certainly be left with the council clerk for distribution to council and so forth. But I just, I think that it is appropriate for us to give it more thoughtful consideration, and all of council I know appreciate your patience.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, we'll move on then to ordinance 23-14. And thank you, everybody, for coming out. We're just, we're moving, I'm sorry, the staff can meet with you out and answer your questions. Jennifer, can you?
I just want to make sure that we're going to be billed while waiting for the ordinance and closing, so I can get a chance to talk with you. Sorry.
We, you know, I can't address that right now, I'm sorry, we can't have public testimony. You can talk to staff later. Okay, 23-14, please.
Authorizing an additional police officer position for a temporary period of time and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. I see Chief Hines and, and/or Marcia?
Yeah, actually, I'm going to handle this, the chief's not here this evening. As mentioned in the memo, we're asking for a temporary addition of one police officer position. We have an officer who has notified us that he is retiring in January, and so we want to be able to get an officer from our current list to be able to go to the academy this June so that they will be ready whenever the officer retires. So it will be a temporary request.
Very good. Any council questions, discussion?
Well, I was just going to say, in light of that, I would move to dispense with the public hearing and treat it as an emergency.
We have Mr. Maurer signed up for this, and then we'll go on to that, please.
Okay. Sorry.
I think, I think, I'm not sure, there might be a sort of minor error in this ordinance. It mentions that the officer plans to retire on January the 2014, do you not mean 2015?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Good catch. Well, Mr. Maurer, thank you. Mr. Gerber?
Well, I made a motion to, I want to dispense with the public hearing.
Second.
Can we have a second? Ann?
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
On the ordinance.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
On the ordinance. Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
2914 is Elizabeth Miller at 367 South High. 30-14 is Frederick M. Cogan and Judith W. Harvey at 6165 Dublin Road, and Christopher Head and Betty Head is the subject of the ordinance 3114, property on Dublin Road.
Okay, so we need an introduction?
I'll introduce it.
And Marcia?
Yeah, these are three additional property owners that we have settled with for the Dublin Road Bike Path project. All three of them have agreed to the appraised value on the properties that we'll be taking for right-of-way in Eastman.
Any council questions or discussions? Mr. Maurer, I see you've signed up on 30-14 and 31-14.
I'm sorry, this is, it was a matter I could have, here it is. Is the 61, the address, 6165, is that north or south of 161?
South.
South of 161? How come you have a number like that, south of 161? Don't they start at zero?
Yeah. We just do.
What?
Who knows?
All right, just curious.
Don't know.
Want to check in with the post office?
We don't assign numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's it.
I need a motion to dispense with the public hearing and treat ordinance 2914 as emergency legislation, is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
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 Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
And on the ordinances.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
2914 is Elizabeth Miller at 367 South High. 30-14 is Frederick M. Cogan and Judith W. Harvey at 6165 Dublin Road, and Christopher Head and Betty Head is the subject of the ordinance 3114, property on Dublin Road.
Okay, so we need an introduction?
I'll introduce it.
And Marcia?
Yeah, these are three additional property owners that we have settled with for the Dublin Road Bike Path project. All three of them have agreed to the appraised value on the properties that we'll be taking for right-of-way in Eastman.
Any council questions or discussions? Mr. Maurer, I see you've signed up on 30-14 and 31-14.
I'm sorry, this is, it was a matter I could have, here it is. Is the 61, the address, 6165, is that north or south of 161?
South.
South of 161? How come you have a number like that, south of 161? Don't they start at zero?
Yeah. We just do.
What?
Who knows?
All right, just curious.
Don't know.
Want to check in with the post office?
We don't assign numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's it.
I need a motion to dispense with the public hearing and treat ordinance 2914 as emergency legislation, is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
2914 is Elizabeth Miller at 367 South High. 30-14 is Frederick M. Cogan and Judith W. Harvey at 6165 Dublin Road, and Christopher Head and Betty Head is the subject of the ordinance 3114, property on Dublin Road.
Okay, so we need an introduction?
I'll introduce it.
And Marcia?
Yeah, these are three additional property owners that we have settled with for the Dublin Road Bike Path project. All three of them have agreed to the appraised value on the properties that we'll be taking for right-of-way easement.
Any council questions or discussion? Mr. Maurer, I see you've signed up on 30-14 and 31-14.
I'm sorry, this is, it was a matter I could have, here it is. Is the address 6165, is that north or south of 161?
South.
South of 161? How come you have a number like that, south of 161? Don't they start at zero?
Yeah.
We just do.
What? All right, just curious.
Don't know.
Want to check in with the post office?
We don't assign numbers.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
I need a motion to dispense with the public hearing and treat ordinance 29-14 as emergency legislation, is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
And on the ordinances.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to introduce a motion to waive the council rules to group ordinances 29-14 through 31-14 together, asking the clerk to read the property owners' names and property addresses into the record. Okay, second. Ann?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
29-14 is Elizabeth Miller at 367 South High. 30-14 is Frederick M. Cogan and Judith W. Harvey at 6165 Dublin Road, and Christopher Head and Betty Head is the subject of the ordinance 31-14, property on Dublin Road.
Okay, so we need an introduction?
I'll introduce it.
And Marcia?
Yeah, these are three additional property owners that we have settled with for the Dublin Road Bike Path project. All three of them have agreed to the appraised value on the properties that we'll be taking for right-of-way easement.
Any council questions or discussions? Mr. Maurer, I see you've signed up on 30-14 and 31-14.
I'm sorry, this is, it was a matter I could have, here it is. Is the address 6165, is that north or south of 161?
South.
South of 161? How come you have a number like that, south of 161? Don't they start at zero?
Yeah.
We just do.
What? All right, just curious.
Don't know.
Want to check in with the post office?
We don't assign numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's it.
I need a motion to dispense with the public hearing and treat ordinance 29-14 as emergency legislation, is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
And on the ordinances.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Resolution 32-14.
Authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between Jerome Township, Washington Township, and the City of Dublin.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Marcia?
Yes, council knows, we've been working on this for the past couple of years to resolve this issue of providing fire and EMS service to the area in Tartan Ridge that's currently in Jerome Township, and this agreement, we believe, resolves the issue between the City of Dublin, Washington Township, and Jerome Township. And as you are aware, if we would have annexed under the regular annexation process, there would have been reparations that were paid or required to be paid. Because we did this as an expedited too, it's not a requirement, but we are allowed to negotiate with the townships to resolve those issues. Based upon our recent discussions and work with the townships, both townships have agreed to conforming the boundaries, which will result in the area that is currently in Jerome will become Washington Township, and the issue of creating the billing agreement will no longer be necessary. The terms of the agreement with Jerome Township is that they had requested that we acquire or assist them in acquiring a fire EMS vehicle, and the developer, the Edwards Company, has agreed to contribute 50% of that cost, which is estimated at $210,000 or capped at $210,000. Jerome Township did approve the agreement or the authorization to execute the agreement last Friday. Washington Township is scheduled for a meeting on May 13 to review and approve the same agreement. We attended the April 22 Washington Township Board of Trustees meeting where they agreed to extend or continue the service that they provide now through June 30, which is a timeframe that we believe the boundary adjustment will be made, and we plan to have for next council agenda, the ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance to conform the boundaries. And with that, we would ask for a second reading at the next meeting and approval at that time.
Terrific. Thank you for all the hard work on that. Marcia, you and your staff, including Mossad, who's recently moving on, and Ms. Reedler, and everybody, really, it was a long, long time getting this matter resolved, and I appreciate it very much. The Union County portion, does that go on their agenda? Do we have a date? They have to approve as well?
Yeah.
And when will that happen?
The Union County Commissioners will need to approve it. We have had conversations with representatives from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office and from the Union County Commissioners Office, and I'm not sure of the exact date or timeframe that it will be scheduled for their review.
Obviously, after May 13.
Right. After we have the second reading of the boundary adjustment, we'll compile the record, file it with them, they have a 30-day notice requirement, then it's our understanding it will be on the agenda, and it's effective as soon as they rule on it.
Terrific. Thank you. Any other questions from council?
The only comment I'd like to ask, actually, a question. Do we have any other pockets like this that we need to be moving on?
No, this is the only one.
And we never will.
No, I know. In the future, we won't make the same mistakes we've made.
Good question, though.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, there'll be a second reading, public hearing on May 5. Resolution 31-14.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2014 street maintenance program.
Introduce it.
Thank you, Tim. Mr. Hammer Smith?
Well, with the arrival of spring and the NHL playoffs, it's that most joyous time of the year again where we go out and maintain our streets. So to that end, we opened bids on April 22 for the 2014 street maintenance program, which was estimated at $5.8 million. You may recall that two weeks ago, we provided you a memo in your packet regarding summary of proposed work. We suggested that although funding through the CIP was, for street maintenance itself, was around $3.5 million, we suggested that we add another $1.6 million to that amount to address several streets that were in need of repair after the winter that we experienced this year. In your packet, you'll notice that we do propose over 40 streets to be improved this year. There was an exhibit within your packet, those additional streets that we recommended that we did include in the bid, were McKittrick Road between Highland Crow and Jerome Road, extensive repairs on US 33 that is our maintenance responsibility, from Post Road to I-270, pavement patching on Terra Hill Drive, and then also the milling and resurfacing of Post Road from Avery Muirfield Drive over to Perimeter Drive. Several other streets to note, Memorial Drive, east of Muirfield Drive, Avery Road, north of Rand Road, several neighborhoods this year where we're going to be doing work within Coventry Woods, and also down in Heather Glen. So if you have any questions regarding these 40 streets, I'd be glad to answer them in detail.
Counsel?
Regarding the $4.9 million that we suggested for funding, when you look at the bids that we received, the amount just for street maintenance itself came in just under $4.3 million, so we really did have aggressive bids this year. Along with the program, we will be doing shared-use path maintenance, and also, which is listed in the staff report, so if you have any questions regarding that particular work, I'd be glad to answer those. There is just a small portion of connection work being included in this year's program, that's up on McKittrick Road to make a connection across McKittrick Road from Tartan West up to Tartan Ridge. Regarding notice, we do always provide this brochure that's handed out to residents on those affected streets, and details the program on the front side, gives detailed information and kind of frequently asked questions on the back. Contractor will provide 24 hours' notice for those residents whose driveways may be closed. We also provide signs adjacent to the work, they look like real estate signs or kind of that size, that tell when the work will take place. It also tells folks to go to our website for additional information, where we do update the schedule daily. And then also, we do use changeable message boards where appropriate to allow people to know that work is going to be taking place. And then lastly, a lot of just direct interaction with residents with our construction inspector and our pavement maintenance engineer. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have regarding this year's program. And we are, the lowest bid was received by Strouzer Paving in the amount listed in the staff report, which was $4.943,488, which was almost 15% less than our estimate. We are recommending that we award the contract to them. We've had great experience with Strouzer, they've been the contractor who has performed our project the last two years. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Council questions? Thanks for all your hard work following this, and you know, I do have one concern, and that would be nothing that we can deal with here, but with the hard winter and the potholes and everything that's going on, if you've been back through some of our private street areas, it's just, it's really, really getting difficult. I don't know what kind of teeth we have or any, what kind of efforts we can make to that end, but you know what I'm talking about in perimeter and other areas between the dealerships and the center, even across the way at the Kroger centers as well.
And we'll follow up with regard to code enforcement on that.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Mike, because you mentioned that, I was just on that street over the weekend. Is that a public street?
No, it's a private street.
See, that's part of the problem, and I think if we ever do those again, we need to think real hard about what we do.
Obviously, we aren't going to have private streets anymore than it's a bad.
Yeah, I mean, agreed, but there needs to be some kind of teeth in terms of maintenance, well, I know, sinking fund requirement or some kind of way to pay for it.
I think, too, that like, the problem with that area is because of the gigantic trucks that bring all the cars in, and there need to be some kind of better reinforcement or something, not just, all they keep doing is putting, you know, more blocktop on it, you know, that isn't.
Gives back to when it was originally built in terms of the quality of the construction, so.
I will tell you that a portion of that is going to get improved as part of the daycare that was just constructed over there, that is part of one of the requirements.
I saw it was just about finished. Very good, thank you. That takes us to Resolution 33-14. Yes.
We want to vote on the.
Yeah, sorry.
Mr. Reiner?
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Sorry for getting ahead of myself.
Thank you.
Resolution 33-14.
Intend to appropriate a 0.033 acre more or less permanent easement, a 0.046 acre more or less temporary easement from Cynthia S. Tawney for the property located at 20 Longview Drive for the construction of a multi-use path as part of the Dublin Road South.
Thank you. Marcia?
Yeah, this property owner and the next ordinance are both property owners that we've not been able to reach agreement, and we're starting the process for eminent domain on both of these, on the Dublin Road South Bike Path.
Any questions? Ann?
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Resolution 34-14.
Intend to appropriate a 0.026 acre more or less permanent easement, 0.031 acre more or less temporary easement from Roslyn, Jane Turner, and Lawrence K. Watkins for property located at 15 Longview Drive for construction of a multi-use path as part of the Dublin Road South Phase 3 project.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Same thing, Marcia.
Same.
Very good. Any questions or discussion? Ann?
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Resolution 35-14.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an addendum to the Cooperative Right-of-Way Acquisition Agreement with the City of Columbus for arterial street improvements at hard and sawmill roads.
Introduce it.
Thank you. Mr. Hammer Smith? I think we know pretty much what's going on here, so briefly.
Paul?
Yeah, I'm curious.
So to make sure, I might be asking the same question that Amy asked, though. We are not expecting anything more along Sawmill Road as these kind of situations continue to have to pay Columbus.
Not for us, no.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Anything else? Anne?
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Okay, I don't believe there's anything under other, so we'll go on to staff comments.
Just one item we put at your desk this evening, an update from the workshop that we had last week on some of the follow-up items that we had committed to. And then also, we did confirm with Crawford Hoynes that they will be ready to present on May 12th for the next workshop session.
Very good.
And that's it.
We have committee reports. We had a finance committee meeting this evening. Committee Chair?
Thank you. Yes, at 6 o'clock tonight, we had a finance committee meeting, and I'm happy to report that we are in excellent financial shape so far this fiscal year with our, primarily our income tax has been substantially higher than we had anticipated or where we were last year. So at this particular point in time, we are more than solvent and would hope to continue similar. It probably won't be quite as high as it has been this first quarter, but certainly we have no reason to believe that we will not receive the level of income that we had anticipated in our original approval of our budget. Also, we briefly discussed that one of the reasons for the health of our finances, there are many, but certainly one of them is that we have an excellent mix of companies in our community, so that while there may be recessions in certain categories of businesses because of our extensive mix of companies, we're able to have, withstand some of those recession numbers and while others are increasing. So that constitutes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, and good work, Angel. Way to keep us, way to keep us in the black. Okay, council, let's see, council roundtable, you want to start, Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Marcia, I want to ask you quick about the memo in here about the coyote management. A couple of residents have brought this coyote issue up to me, and Mimi Migliore and one of the residents, we're trying to get a meeting together to address it. I'm just sort of curious. It seems as though our approach is that people have to change their behavior as opposed to us doing something else to get rid of these coyotes. That seems to be the repeated message, and I'm just curious if there isn't something more we can do. You know, they talk in here about, I know the chief, chief of police from Gehanna, Dennis Murphy, I happen to know him, and he's trapped them in the past. Isn't there something that, can we look into this more and come up with some more options other than? If it were me and they were in my backyard and I was told to just not grill out, I wouldn't be very happy about modifying my behavior. I would be wondering if there wasn't something the city could do to get rid of these coyotes.
I mean, we have looked at different options over the past years, and based upon information from the experts who study these animals, that this is the best approach that's offered. The big thing, and it's discussed in the memo, is the issue of when you do try to thin out the numbers, that they typically will come back and in some cases, come back with more in numbers. We can look to see if there are other options, but at this point, I don't know that there are any additional options. We try to, anytime we have calls or concerns that are expressed to meet with the residents, we've had points when we've gone to the HOA meetings, we've had a presentation at city council. So we try to focus a lot on the educational side, recognizing that it is something that does cause concern on residents' part, and try to address some of their concerns and fears through education.
One thing I would say, Greg, I, we had every year in my neighborhood, because we have a yard, a huge wooded park, we always have coyote encounters, and Ms. Migliore came to a meeting that we set up for the concerned citizens, and she spent a lot of time, brought a lot of visuals to educate the residents, and I, you know, I don't think anybody's happy necessarily that we have these wild animals living amongst us, but I think people left feeling better and more empowered to, to deal with them, and I don't think anybody's saying, you know, don't grill out. I think people are saying, you know, what we're saying is, you need to be vigilant, you need to watch your kids, watch your small dogs, don't let your cats out, and be prepared to harass the coyotes if you do happen to see one, because that's the best thing we can do, is make them afraid of people, because if they're afraid, then they tend to stay away. But I would say that my best advice, just having been through this, is to encourage Ms. Migliore and the residents coming together for a meeting, because she does a great job of talking with folks, and also the readings that she provided, if you have time to peruse that. There's a lot of research on urban coyotes there, they're out there, and it's, it's something that we're just going to have to live with, you know, absent, you know, potentially acting on, you know, one animal who's showing aggression or whatever, but, you know, the bottom line is, they're here and they're not going to go anywhere, I don't think.
Right, so I'll follow up with her and maybe meet with, like Amy suggests, meet with her and the resident and see if.
Yeah, and I know she was working to try to get a meeting set up with the resident that has expressed the concern, and even with their homeowners association meeting.
Okay, well, I'll follow up with that with them. And then I went to a, the Wedgewood Glen HOA meeting last week, and an interesting issue came up, and I don't know whether we've thought this through or not, but, and it has to do with the horrific subject of these ash trees that are all dying. And there were a number of ash trees that were on private property, but the, up there, they were concerned that as they grow even older and they're even more dead, if that's possible, is there an increased risk of wind blowing them over? And, and if that's the case, do we have any, you know, if people's weeds grow too high, we go cut it and send them a bill. Is there anything we can do if there are trees that look like they're potentially really problematic and they're going to come over that we can cut them down and do something to prevent that from happening?
I, I know we've had, anytime it impacts or potentially impacts city property or city right of way, we contact the resident to remove the tree. If there's concerns on just individual properties, we can follow up, I'm not sure from a legal standpoint what ability we have, we can at least notify the resident and make sure that they understand the issues and the concerns, but legally, I would defer to Steve on, on that one.
Yeah, because, I mean, I just took three down from my own yard, and they're, it's just a horrible, horrible problem, and I'm afraid it's just going to get worse and worse and worse, and eventually, just like the storms we're maybe going to have tomorrow, you know, you could, maybe people need to know, if your tree falls on your neighbor's house, it's your responsibility. And it isn't just Mother Nature, but you're going to be on the hook, and if we can at least notify them or come up with some kind of a strategy where we could investigate possibly taking them down.
Mr. Smith, I'd like to request that you provide a memo to all of council, rather than just a conversation with Mr. Peterson, because I've experienced the same thing in my neighborhood, people asking about their neighbor's dead tree. I had a neighbor that thankfully took her tree down, but this was a landmark tree and it was going to fall on our house.
I just sort of memoed myself.
You know, it's really a significant health, safety issue. I mean, tall grass is one thing, and it's annoying, but a tree potential killer or property damage that can be, you know, created out of that, so it seems like maybe we could even have some legislation to, to, you know, to address it. I know that it's very expensive. I had some taken down myself, and I think we had a bill, it was some $2,000 to take one tree down. Not cheap.
Well, partly, and we can also look at education to see if there, and you know, for a long period of time, we worked with residents to, to try to determine if, if the Emerald Ash Bore was at the tree, or how, what they could use in way of chemicals to, to preserve the life of the tree. So we can work on an educational piece of that, with that as well.
I mean, don't, if we, if we do a, cut grass, do whatever, take care of the weed, we can put that on the tax duplicate and have it billed that way. Seems like there would be a mechanism here that, that could be followed in a similar fashion. And I, you know, you don't want to be punitive, and there, I'm sure many people that, that just can't come up with the cash to do that right of way. Maybe there's some kind of program or something we can do to, to mitigate that or whatever.
We'll get, we'll back to you in a couple of weeks with the latest. Thank you.
And I'm not suggesting we bid it out, but even if the city were able to engage some companies and they have a volume, you could get a volume discount for that, because the, the, the time has run out on these trees. The treatments aren't working, they're dead, they're coming down.
They're dead.
We, we need to address it.
Good. Anything else? Amy?
I just have one item. I am delighted to say that this Thursday evening is my first Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Vice Mayor Gerber has sworn me in, so I am ready to go. I've got my packet and very much looking forward to serving. Mayor Keenan and I talked about putting an agenda item where, you know, the committee reports so that I can report to council on PNC activity if, if need be. So prepare yourselves, you might be hearing more from the planning commission.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Look forward to that, appreciate you embracing that idea as well. Mary Lee?
Yes, the Morpsy Regional Policy Roundtable was last week, and two presentations that were done that I wanted to share with council. One was done by Erica Young, who is the Director of Strategic Partnerships for the Transportation of America, which is located in Washington DC. But a couple of things that she shared with us was that the Transportation Trust Fund actually runs out of money in July of this year. What that means to Ohio is that in Ohio, we would lose about $1.48 billion coming from the federal government, and in Columbus region, it would mean $39 million that would not be coming here. It is not uncommon for the trust fund to run out, and then the legislature runs around and finds money and, and, you know, puts it back in the fund. However, she said that because of the atmosphere of, of the current legislature, she is not sure that will happen at this time. So that's something we'll need to stay on top of, because we have our project also that would be potentially impacted. She said that there would be obviously no new projects funded, but even those that have been approved might see less money coming as a result of this. The other presentation was done by Steve Campbell of, of the City of Columbus regarding what he called JET, which stands for Jobs Expansion and Transportation. And it's an initiative of Mayor Coleman's that they're looking at the economic development issue, regional trans, it centers around regional transportation and the airport. And they're due out for their report this fall, but I suggested to him that they were not including any of the suburban communities, because it's an issue that they viewed as a Columbus issue, but I felt that it was important that, at a minimum, that they have at least one meeting with the Economic Development Group that's already in place, that represents all of the regional economic development professionals, as everyone is impacted by air service and the ability to recruit and retain companies in their communities. It's not just Columbus. So I'm not sure if Dana might want to follow up on that, but that's something that I think we want to stay on top of, because we certainly have heard that before from companies over the years, that our service, you know, from our airport is, is affected. Another thing I wanted to bring up was the charter review process. We received a memo in February of 25, February 25th by our law department regarding the process. And we had, over the last several years, we come up with things and we say, oh, we need to review the charter and consider changing whatever might have been written in the charter. And so I would like to propose that we ask the administrative team of council to take some time in actually reviewing the charter, and of course, anybody could be invited, and then bring, maybe there really isn't anything of substance, because in this memo, you outline two different formats. If they're minor changes, then we as a council could make those changes and approval process could be amongst the council. But if it's major changes, then of course, it, it takes on a public process that's quite different and requires a public vote. So if the administrative team would be willing to review the charter to make any recommendations to the staff, because staff would obviously be involved in the legal department in that review.
Yeah, I know the, the one item that had come up previously was the, the number of votes that it would take to pass legislation. I know we clarified that, I don't know if we did change the rules, council's rules of order, if they, they were actually changed, but I know that was one item that was determined, and we, we did get clarification on that issue, so that's something we can bring back to, to get council to, to vote on that as well.
Rick, do you want to weigh in on that?
Well, I mean, certainly the administrative committee can, can look into it. I'm not sure what all we need to look into it, but we can certainly, you know, hold a meeting to take some input from staff, from other council members, see if there is enough to go forward or, or not. So that's perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good.
And another subject matter that has been brought up periodically was the sister cities issue, and with us moving into more international relationships and global relationships, whether that was something that the city was interested in pursuing more formally. And I, I don't know whatever happened with that, because that was in former council meetings and discussions.
I know, yeah, at one point in the past that we, there have been memos that have been prepared as to what it would take. I know typically, it can be expensive to have a sister city, but we can go back and get the old memos and bring that back to council.
And then the last thing is that I was in a meeting last week where the question was raised to me, which really, I explained to them, I didn't have anything to do with this, but none of us did, was redistricting of the, potentially of the school district. And I explained to them that they should really talk to the Board of Education about that, not city council, but, and I sort of thought more about it and went home and, and went to their website, the school's website. And actually, the superintendent's message on the website right now has to do with redistricting. And so I can give this to Anne, and she can put copies in your next packets, but just for clarification, because people asked me in this meeting anyway, that if redistricting is necessary, would not take effect in the next school year, according to his message, it would be in the 15, 16 school year. And it's mostly the, the development on the Columbus element of Dublin, a school district, according to the way that he's phased and different plans that he has recommended consideration of. It's not within the corporate limits of Dublin, where the increased student population is typically increasing for the district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary Lee. Tim?
God?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody who supported the Dublin Fund, the Emerald Dinner the other evening, and I want to remind everyone that this Friday is the Dublin Arts Council Garden.
Party.
Party, which is indoor, in case the weather's inclement, and for a get out and exercise program, there will be a Dublin Bike Tour at, on May the 2nd, 11:30. So part of our healthy initiative, get people out and have them enjoy the town.
Very good.
Thank you.
Rick?
Two items very quickly. Marcia, I see that we received, I guess, the annual report of Dublin is home? Is that what this is?
It's the annual report.
Okay, so I noticed there's parts, so when I read through this, it's not a criticism, I'm just trying to understand, this is going out to people now to showcase what Dublin did last year and what it was all about?
Well, this is more of a, a marketing piece. As part of the state of the city, we had a much smaller version that was sent to or provided that evening and is available online. This, typically, we try to have each year some copies of a full annual report, and then we do get requests from like, rating agencies and things like that that like to see these. So this is something that's used more as a marketing piece.
Well, I thought it was nicely done. I, I did notice, though, that, you know, council and goals and objectives, I mean, we had a, you know, we had a retreat earlier this year, those are not stated, this is from last year, the members on boards and commissions, that's changed, things like that. So I don't know if it makes sense to be more, you know, proactive on those things or just, or not, but just more of a question and just an observation.
Yeah, this is for the 2013.
Yeah, and last thing, I think everybody received a memo from me to you, initiated by Sandra, with respect to the veteran activities that we're facilitating, and really just want to, if anybody has questions, please give me a call. A lot of this has already been in the budget, so we've gone through that, there's no real changes. There are some ideas for consideration, but those will come to council on a piecemeal basis, a case-by-case basis, and there's nothing here today to present, so I just wanted to follow up and let everybody know what's going on.
Good.
With the dollar figures and everything. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I echo Rick's comments about the report. I thought it was really, really well done. It was an excellent piece, certainly can, will help us with, from an economic development perspective, and it was easy to read and really outlined in layman's terms and graphs and such, the, the income and expense side of the, of our budget. So thank you for that. I attended the Home for Hope luncheon, it's over in Wellington Reserve, a house is being built and donated, and the proceeds will go to the James. That was on April 22nd. On April 23rd, I spoke to the Ohio Municipal Clerk Association and had the whole crew in from the state of Ohio and stayed here in Dublin, filled up some hotel rooms, I presume, which is always a good thing. On, later on that, that afternoon, Mary Lee, myself, Tim, Marcia, and other staff members attended the Nationwide Legends Luncheon. We also had Skip Pritchard, who's the President and CEO of OCLC, at our table, and it was a good time to, I was able to spend some time with him and, and share some, share some information. So that was, that was very good. Thank you for that. And I had one question, I don't need an answer right now, but the historic Dublin marker project, if you could just give us an update on where that, is it underway? Are we looking at it? Is it over? Is it?
Well, part of that was, it has been looked at, and part of it was related to the Bridge Street District and what we do overall there.